I do.
Yes, yeah, I am, I am.
Okay, you ready, Becky?
Yep.
Okay. It is 9:00 AM.
Good morning, Justin.
Good morning.
You're right on time.
It is 9:00 AM. I will call the meeting of the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. We will be abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy which is at the entrance to this room. At 9:15, we will adjourn as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and meet as the County Board of Equalization, also abiding by the Open Meetings Act.
Recede.
Recede, excuse me. Okay, first order of business is to open with prayer. And would you please join me? Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this wonderful day. We thank you for the wonderful weather that we are experiencing in the melting of this snow. Thank you for the many blessings that we enjoy, the freedoms that we cherish so much. Look after those less fortunate than ourselves, that they may seek guidance and comfort from you. Look after the many men and women in law enforcement, the military, and our first responders that look after and safeguard our safety and our many freedoms. Look after this group as we meet today, that we may make judgment and decisions that are favorable in your eye. These things we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Next order of business is to approve the minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting held on January 30, 2023.
Chairman, I move to approve the minutes regarding the board commissioner meeting that was held January 30, 2023.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Next order of business is to consider the following. First, claims and treasurer's receipts.
Nice to have the inheritance in there.
There's several nice-sized amounts in there, correct?
Chairman, I'd make the motion that we approve the claims and treasurer's receipts as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Becky, the property tax credit for February, is that? Can you further clarify, or is that?
On the second page.
Second page, yes. The $2 million. That's all the change. Is that, what do they call that? I think we discussed.
Those MFOs.
Is that all MFOs?
Yeah.
$2.8 million?
Usually it's like $149,000. No, I don't know.
Well, I guess it's the, at the end of the MFOs, it's the property tax credit for February.
Yeah, the MFOs is $110,000.
Yeah, that's $110,000. This is an item below.
I don't understand that MFO, either.
Well, that's mutual fire. More money comes from insurance that's paid, but below that.
No, I think, I think he's talking about the state refund, isn't he? That they've ordered to give the counties.
Yeah, the state refund. I'm not talking about the fire.
The property tax credit.
Yeah.
For February, which is $2.8 million and change.
I think that's probably just the annual thing.
I said the monthly, huh?
It would be, wouldn't it?
For my annual.
We do have a motion, a second, correct?
We do, and I'm just curious.
In February, in April, it says the property tax credit.
Okay. I was just curious about the origin of that, but.
Yes, and they, they have to balance that, and then they, they might have to also return some of that money. It's a process to balance that, the property tax credits, and then some of that money sometimes gets returned.
Okay, so that also involves going to the exemptions. Got it, thank you.
Okay, okay, good. Thank you very much. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Next order of business is receive and order filed the fee reports submitted by the county clerk and clerk of district court.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we receive and order filed the fee report submitted by the county clerk in the amount of $490, and the clerk of the district court in the amount of $8,560.56.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Brunz.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye.
We'll get it figured out about December.
I have to stop counting.
Fingers crossed.
You're supposed to sign over here, Bob.
Notice. On that one, huh?
It won't matter. They'll take it. I'll just sign under you.
It can be so complicated, you can't. Getting them pretty fast. I'm just listening to it. It's like six, six, six minutes.
Five and a half.
Good morning, Job.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Your bronca's got a new coat, huh?
Yeah, that's why I'm wearing my jacket again.
Until September, huh?
Tough match, Job, or what happened?
What's that? Yeah, knocks somebody out.
Isn't that nice? Assuming you did.
Mind my Ps and Qs?
My, I saw her knock me out.
Just wondering when that was gonna happen.
Let's.
What is this? Oh, it's a concert.
I think they sent a request down with it that we read it all the way to the end, so they must know us well.
Yeah.
And if you look at the bottom line, you get a really good deal. Can you imagine how big that would be? It was more than that.
Yeah. And we wouldn't spend America's money if we didn't have this section, dude.
Personal words.
Morning.
Make the front page in the paper.
Yeah.
Looking better like this.
Thanks, I appreciate it.
A little more comfortable there? Okay. We will recess as Lincoln County Board of Commissioners and convene as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization, again, abiding by the Open Meetings Act as amended, a copy which is at the entrance to the room. First order of business, approve minutes regarding Lincoln County Board of Equalization meeting held on January 30, 2023.
Chairman, I would move to approve Board of Equalization meeting minutes that were held January 30, 2023.
Second. We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Next order of business is certificates of correction and refund as submitted by the county assessor. Get a negative on that, so, thank you. Next order of business is motor vehicle tax exemption applications submitted by the county treasurer. Looks like we have a few. Should we, is she okay where she's sitting at?
Oh, geez, that's a good business coming up. How long has she been off of herself? She'll be okay.
And we do have the county treasurer in our room here with us, and I will pass these on.
Yes. Alex Caciullo, the county treasurer.
Good morning, Alex.
Good morning.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make the motion that we approve the motor vehicle application exemption by the Salvation Army for a number of vehicles used for both religious and charitable purposes and recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Hugley.
Aye.
Luler.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Mr. Chairman, I have an application for exemption for motor vehicle taxes from Riverside Baptist Church. This is on a 2003 Lincoln Town Car to be used for religious purposes. It has been recommended for approval by the Lincoln County Treasurer. It would be my motion that we go ahead and approve that application.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Luler.
Aye.
Hugley.
Aye.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Woodruff.
Aye. Thank you, Alex. Is there any other business to come before the Board of Equalization? Hearing none, we will adjourn at 9:19 as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Good morning, Mrs. Erickson.
Yes.
We have about 10 minutes before.
Yes.
Your item agenda.
Yes.
We'll be with you then.
All right, I'm just here, I just got here a little bit.
Good morning, Mrs. Erickson.
Yes.
We have about 10 minutes before.
Yes.
Your item agenda.
Yes.
We'll be with you then.
All right, I'm just here, I just got here a little bit.
Is there any other business to come before the Board of Equalization? Hearing none, we will adjourn at 9:19 as the Lincoln County Board of Equalization and reconvene as the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Good morning, Mrs. Erickson.
Yes.
We have about 10 minutes before
Yes.
your item agenda.
Yes.
We'll be with you then.
All right, I'm just here, I just got here a little bit.
That's quite all right.
I'm going to be present. I haven't done that yet, and that would be nice if they heard it from us. That would be a good thing, what they did is appreciated. Actually, they want to get a lot of bad stuff.
Is it okay if I join you? I mean, I think, I think I got a lot of positive feedback, but also I do have a lot of
And that's what she hears.
Yeah.
You can grab some dollars from the money.
I can do that too, I drive by, I okay. Can I? Good time. It's better than asking the day after.
Our next agenda item. Bonnie Erickson is here to discuss the issue of the Trailblazer Pipeline. Do you need us to move a chair?
I consider the chair, if that's okay.
Okay, that'd be perfect. Please state your names and sign in on the clipboard there if you would for us, please.
My name is Bonnie Erickson.
Great.
And if you're not that one, I am from Wallace.
Great, great.
Good morning, Bonnie.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ma'am, would you like to join us, please? Join me?
I'm Peggy Baker. I'm her daughter.
Please sign in.
This is two.
Two?
Six.
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 Mrs. Erickson, the floor is yours. We've had a couple of phone conversations, and I understand that you have some things you wish to talk with us about in regards to the transmission of carbon dioxide in the Trailblazer Pipeline, is that correct?
I have several issues I want to talk to you about. I don't know how many of you are aware of everything. And I see where you've already signed the okay for the pipeline to go through, which in my estimation is a big mistake, but we'll get to that.
Okay.
In the first place, I have land just north of Wallace, and pipeline runs through my land. There's two pipelines there, one's gas, one's oil. They've been there for many years, and when they, when we allowed them to go through our property, they gave us an easement, but you all know what an easement is.
Uh huh.
And they paid us so much. I did not know, and maybe you know, but I did not know that these easements, whoever bought it for Trailblazers, bought it from me, that they, whoever buys your easement can sell it to anybody, anywhere in the world, even foreign countries, and you have no knowledge of it. And they never pay you another dime, but they make millions of money off of selling your easement. And that's a fact. And I don't know if you know that or not. The other thing, there's so, so many things I need to tell you. This pipeline that goes through my property, I've seen it, and it's metal. CO2 is abrasive to metal. And it, it can cause problems. And I don't know if you know what CO2 can do, maybe you've heard of it, but in Mississippi, in the late 1900s, there was a leak in Mississippi. Do you know that when this carbon dioxide leaks, it smells like rotten eggs? It makes a green cloud over the area, and people cannot breathe because there's no air in it. And they die, and cattle dies. Everybody dies because they cannot breathe in this. And depending on how heavy the areas above is, how fast this carbon disposes. And they claim, and they're wrong, or I think they're wrong, they claim that they're doing a good ju, like, the carbon dioxide is really doing a good thing for the atmosphere, which they are wrong. It does not do anything for the atmosphere. If it does anything, it makes, it takes it downhill, so.
Okay.
And the people in Missouri, Mississippi, Sotia, Mississippi, about 7:00 o'clock one evening, they started smelling rotten eggs. And then this green cloud come over the whole area, covered a big area, and everybody was choking to death. They can't breathe, there's no air in this carbon, no air. Cattle die, people die. If, if it raises fast enough, they can get air before they die. If it doesn't raise fast enough, depending on the air for air, it can, you can live, but you're gonna be unconscious. You don't know what's going on. Your mind is befuddled for quite a while, and your lungs, the people in Mississippi, this was in 2009 when they had the leak, and maybe you knew they had a leak then, and maybe you didn't, but they are still having lung problems because this affects their lungs the rest of their life.
Okay.
Another thing, in Cameroon. I don't know if you know where Cameroon is, I'm not sure, it's not in, it's, it, they had a leak, and only 1,700 people died, plus the cattle, plus all the dogs, cats, cattle, whatever it is, they die because they can't breathe. Cars can't run. In Mississippi, there was a lady that was just really getting overcome by it, and her son, she knew her son was on the way to get her, but this was prior to the, to the leak. And she called her son and said, "You got to come and get me, I'm really sick. I don't know what's the matter, but it smells terrible." And he said he was on the way. He never got there, 'cause his car died, because cars won't run in this. They have to have air to run. They don't, if you don't have air, they won't run.
Okay.
So the emergency response team couldn't get there either?
Oh yeah, they, they called for the, the ambulances, and they, they couldn't get, they couldn't come either, because they can't run without air, so. It's, there was 45 people in the hospitals from Sotia, Mississippi that were physically damaged from this product. Another thing that carbon dioxide people are doing, and I have no say in my property, the pipe that goes through, I have no say at all. Do you know what they're doing with this? They're taking this product, CO2 is a very, very strong, very potent product. And when they take, I'm just using my line because that's what I'm familiar with, but when they go through my property, the, the pipeline that is there is a metal pipeline. And it's invasive and destructive to a metal pipeline. And the gas line that's through it now has just a certain amount of pressure, and it doesn't expand. But CO2 has lots of pressure on it, lots of pressure on this pipeline. And it goes from, if you know where it goes, from northern Colorado to Beatrice, Nebraska. That's where it goes. And there's lots of counties in between here. I was, I've been worried about this for quite a while, and they finally got ahold of a man from northeast Nebraska. And they are wanting to put, excuse me, put a new pipeline in northern eastern Nebraska. There's no one there, not one there now. And they are trying to stop it. And they got ahold of him, and they've talked to him several times. And he said that they don't, they don't want it there at all because it's too dangerous. And do you know there's 5,000 and some miles of pipeline in the United States of CO2? And you don't want to know where it goes. The, the oil fields that are, have been pumped dry. It goes to the oil fields and is forced underground, and it does fracking. And I think you've all heard of fracking. And fracking is where they, the CO2 or carbon dioxide, whatever you wanna call it, completely, it pushes the ground around so they can get the oil out of it, so these dry wells can start pumping oil again. And I'm, I'm not, I try not to keep up with some things, but anyway, I understand by the government, you, they don't want oil production in the United States now. But these guys can go right ahead and start the wells pumping if they get the CO2 that they want, and sell oil, and make, they're, they're making millions, and you're not making a dime, and it's right through your property. And I don't want a dime from them, 'cause I don't like what they're doing. And the people that live there, where they're fracking the land, are worried about earthquakes, and the land will be moving because they're moving the land underneath, which is, the way they get their oil is to pressure the land, so the land's gonna move. And another thing they do, which I'm really totally disgusted with, is they have a tax credit. They may, they're bringing in millions of dollars, and they do not pay one cent of tax on it, not one cent, because they got a tax credit. You know what a tax credit is?
Yeah, I don't get near enough of them.
No. Anyway, I, I don't know. I, I just wanted you guys to know some of the things that are happening with this carbon dioxide pipeline. It should be stopped, and I was really disappointed when I heard you all voted for it. Did you know all this stuff? I've told you?
I did listen in to one of their informational meetings that they had online prior to, and of course, you know, they were trying to give as much information, probably in the favorable aspect.
Right.
To me, I was under the impression that they had done a lot of research and, you know, looking at all of the effects that it could have.
They are, have not, well, they know what they can do. But people in, I talked to a man from Burgess County, and the line goes about two miles north of Grant. They did not know anything about, they knew that it was going through, but they didn't know any of the repercussions of the things that could happen from it. And so I give him one of my books, and I got a book for each of you.
Which reminds me, we're, we're within about five minutes of your allotted time, so if you have some information, do you want us to?
Yeah, I do.
We can take care of that for you, don't, you know.
I just, don't give them your book. Well, maybe you can't have my book.
Yours is, no, yours is over there, okay. Never mind.
We also wondered if, if the emergency's response in the area knows how to take it, take care of a leak, and take care of, like, the hospital, the, the first responders, you know.
That would certainly be something that if our emergency manager is not aware of those issues and those sorts of problems, he would certainly be advised to do that.
Well, I, I wanted to bring it to you, and I knew it'd take a little time, and I just don't know how many of you are really aware of everything that this pipeline causes, and you've already okayed it, so I don't think we can stop it. I don't know how to stop it.
So, just for, just for clarification, this, this board has no authority to okay the pipeline. The, the pipeline is okayed through, it was an existing pipeline that is being retrofitted for reverse flow for the CO2. And all the approvals are done through FERC.
Through FERC.
FERC, it's a Exactly. The Federal Energy Regulatory Commission.
The only thing, the man I, I've been talking to about it says that you need to get ahold of your county commissioners, 'cause they know where to take it from there.
So I believe that FERC has already received their comments on this issue last year, when we submitted a resolution supporting it due to the benefits that it, it does provide as well. I mean, there's, there's pros and cons, we, we do understand that, and we thank you. I thank you for this information, I'll read up on this, because there's some information that I did not know. But it's, it's my understanding that they've taken those comments, and I believe they are in, if they have not already, they're in their deliberative process already for the approval. But this board never had a say in whether or not it was approved or disapproved formally. So just for that clarification. We merely passed a resolution for, for that comment phase in support.
You passed a resolution, it's something made up.
Yeah, in support of the process and the carbon capture is something that our, our whole country needs to be concerned about. whole country needs to be concerned about, because of the benefits that do arise from it, and Commissioner Brunz is exactly correct, there are pros and cons to any particular issue, and the pros, in my opinion, outweigh the cons, especially, especially since you've made us aware of some of those extra things we need to be taking into account.
I did not know how much you knew, or what you knew, I know that I've learned a lot, and I figure if I'm ninety-six and I can learn, a bunch of you guys can learn more than I can about it.
Well, we appreciate it, thank you, ma'am. Yeah, we appreciate the information, and it's good to have both sides of the argument presented, and we need to, to have that information in hand, because as Commissioner Brunz states, this particular transfer is not in our control.
Well, I don't know whose control it is, but after they buy the easement, they're in total control, you have no more say about this easement, and they can sell it to foreign countries.
So, there's, there's people listening, because we livestream this, and they're not getting a copy of this, but they can go to boldnebraska.org to get more information, is that correct? That's what I'm saying here.
Yes, they can. And also, I need to tell you that if you ever want to talk to somebody, I know of two people that can come and visit with you, but I don't know if you'd be interested in what they have to say or not.
Well, we certainly would like as much information as possible, but again, to restate the fact is, what happens to that pipeline, we have no control over that.
I know you don't, I, I know that. I just am trying to stop them from doing it. I do not want the CO through my property. You know, where Wallace is, it's just barely north of it, if that leaks at Wallace, the whole town will be dead.
Well, probably.
How are my friends?
I hope that's not the case.
I do too. I'm just telling you that there is danger in this pipeline, and they're not telling anybody that, because they don't want them to know it.
Okay, well, we certainly appreciate you bringing that to the forefront, and like Commissioner Brunz said, this meeting is being livestreamed, and hopefully there are citizens in the county and the area that are taking in this information. And again, boldnebraska.org would be a great spot for folks to get that, get additional information.
I, I believe they have a lot of information on pipelines across the country that, that they advocate against, so.
Okay.
Well, I appreciate you listening to me.
Well, we appreciate you coming in.
I just hope that I, that you learned something from me about it, and maybe you can, I'd like to kind of keep posted as to whether you do anything about it or not, whether anything happens about it or not.
Okay, well, we certainly thank you for your information, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work that you did, it's always good to hear it from the landowner's perspective, too.
Well, it's, I don't, I don't, I don't want it in my, I can only speak for myself.
Okay, appreciate it.
I do not want it going through my property.
Is Gina going to be appearing for the nine forty-five?
No.
She's not, okay. Uh, okay, great. It is nine forty-nine, we will move to our next agenda item, discuss, discuss and consider authorizing the chairman to. Special conditions for the second opportunity supplement of 2023, community-based juvenile services aid enhancement grant.
Ooh.
It's now nine fifty. Okay, Becky, do you have some information in this regard?
Gina could not be here today, I'm actually on this committee. It's kind of unusual to have these enhancement grants, usually you'll get one, very, very seldom, I can't even remember when we've had a second opportunity. As you can see, the amount of the grant is pretty small, it's one thousand one hundred and ninety dollars, but they're applying for these grants to buy ten Chromebooks for the family, skill buildings, changing behaviors, alternative class. So that's what this, this money would be worth, it would be for ten Chromebooks.
I see, okay, in regards to some of the work that she's already discussed with us.
Correct, correct. Like I said, it's kind of a unique thing to actually get even a second opportunity. I don't remember that happening before, but.
And the grants coming from the state of Nebraska?
Yes, it'll be through the Friday Commission indirectly.
Colleagues?
Chairman, I would move to approve and authorize the chairman to sign a state grant award and special conditions for the second opportunity supplemental twenty twenty-three, community-based juvenile services aid enhancement grant.
Second. We have a motion and a second.
They got off easy on that one.
I think they did. Any other discussion? Hearing that, roll call, please.
Weems.
Aye.
Brunz.
Aye.
Hughley.
Aye.
Uller.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, do you have any need for a closed session, sir?
Nope.
Hearing that, next item on the agenda is to hear concerns from elected officials, department heads, or their representatives.
Jason, no pearls of wisdom today? Everybody's out plowing snow today?
Plowing mud.
Plowing mud? There's a few that probably could use it.
I have a question. So the ice melt that the building and grounds use, is that the same stuff that the county road department uses?
I don't know.
Do you think, would it be different? I have a ticket here, Unitec, freeze guard, safe step, ice melt.
It's probably non-toxic and, and a little different compound, and it probably doesn't kill your grass, whereas the county's just using the old fashioned, salt.
Salt.
That's a lot of ice melt.
That's a lot of ice melt, but we needed it.
Well, we've had a lot of ice. Nobody's broken their back, I don't know.
Right.
They've done a good job in most places. That I've seen.
It's just mileage for going to the league meeting.
Nothing about it, she's a memorial clout, she's fifty, ninety-six, ninety-seven. She's on the ball.
Yep, I like that she's advocating for herself.
That did bring up something that I wasn't aware, a lot of things I'm not aware of, but on the easement, I thought there were several different kinds of easements, whether they're transferable, non-transferable, some of them, but a lot of times it could be written in the easement.
And the, most of them just run with the land, so.
Pardon me?
Most of them run with the land, unless the utility operator changes, which you can't, you can do about that.
Right, I know there was an easement that Kelly was involved with, just in northeast corner, that was written specifically for some times, and, and the land thing came up, and so, it's interesting.
Tristan.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Brunz is not here right now, so I'm going to nominate him to come over tomorrow morning, is that okay?
As long as he remembers how to get there, he might need a refresher.
Well, I can draw him a picture.
Oh, good. That was good to meet Commissioner Brunz.
Tristan, did you guys drum up a lot of job applicants at the job fair?
No.
No?
It was kind of a hail mary, but.
Tristan said he wanted to have you come over for bugs in the morning.
I was impressed with how many vendors there were there.
Yeah.
There was, there was a lot.
Yep.
You don't want that part?
I got another thing I need to be doing tomorrow morning.
It's a three oh seven East Fourth, Commissioner Brunz, a reminder.
Thanks for that.
You're welcome.
I'll see you bright.
Commissioner Weems will draw you a map if you need.
I will. I'll see you bright and early and bring donuts, how about that?
I wouldn't complain about that. Thanks, guys.
See ya.
He's lying about the donuts.
Maybe, I don't know.
Bargain clearance.
Jason, so you do have all three of the road rooms on hand.
I used to have one.
I'm anxious to have a look at those, what is your first impression once you get those in your hands?
We're ready to put them to work, excited about it, they're going to work great, so.
I can, I can give you a road that you can come test one on.
Hey, 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 you're out of order, you're out of order there.
I have a suggestion, you come down my road, and then take the cut across over to Miller School, and look at that road, it needs nothing done to it. So, the, the building it up and putting the crown back in it, and the granite and then gravel, I mean, I got a lot of phone calls from people who live over there who are very appreciative, and of course, would like to see more miles of it done. But I don't think you've had a road grader over there, ever since they did that work, maybe once, to do a little pulling in on the shoulders, so.
When, maybe it was mentioned when I was out of the room, the one in six, when are we anticipating that?
Um, should be able to do that here within the next two, three weeks.
I know the.
What's for everybody?
Let's not do it on the twenty-first.
I don't work on statutory two.
Yeah, when is?
Last year, we did it towards the middle or the end of February.
Yeah.
Twenty-first would not be a great day, unless we actually had to.
I don't feel that we have to, but normally we have as an agenda item to just consider setting a date for the one first.
Well, that's, you can set that, but.
Yeah, we can do that next week, but I think, right?
I didn't bring my roads file with me, but I have last year's one in six in there.
I do have that. I had one for that.
I was looking at last year's paperwork the other day, but I guess it just didn't set off any alarm bells.
Works to me like March twenty-eighth.
Usually it's historically always been in February, I haven't statutory.
We had an interim superintendent last spring, and that got to rap a little bit, I think.
Yeah, I think you are right.
We got to have a public hearing to go with it, so.
We got to publish, it looks like, from what I saw here, it was printed February twelve, nineteen, and twenty-six last year. Public hearing, it was held in the county office on the twenty-eighth day of March, just when we had it last year, it looks like. Do we have, we can put it on the agenda for next week?
Yeah, I have other discussions that are setting the date.
And then we have to publicly, publicize it three times?
Some, I, I, some statutes are very specific, so we have to see what.
He's reading up.
This would be kind of a new experience for you, Jason, eh?
Yeah.
So do you want to put it on the agenda and discuss, set dates next weekend?
Yes, I would.
Chairman reminder, I'll be gone next week.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Are you going on vacation too?
I would hardly say it's a vacation.
Well, yeah, we know what you say, let somebody say your thing.
See, that's why I wanted to make sure you had a chance at bugs in the morning tomorrow, because you wouldn't be able to next week. I wanted to make sure I allowed you to do that, and you can speak in regard to it.
Yeah, no, my, my agenda for that trip is jam-packed, I'm trying to get the most out of that as possible, so. And I'll be sitting down with our federal delegation, priming.
Just going to ask what day you're going to see the Nebraska delegation, because I knew you'd be going to DC without that.
Hey, I'm trying to lobby hard for a free trade set, so.
I'm still impressed on my ability to predict the future. Why doesn't it matter, it's just that I'm right.
Not to change the subject, Joe, but every time I see this bill, I'm going to ask, where, where are we?
Personal hello for our Democratic County attorney Tyler.
What?
It says the last name.
Oh, I brought that name up with him a couple times.
I'm still thinking about it.
They weren't willing to work with us? Huh?
It's the old amount.
Yeah.
Last letter, like, what, two months ago, saying they were, I'm guessing they found some things out that they didn't expect.
Maybe, next couple days I can, let's do it jointly, go see if we can get a hold of her. Well, you know what?
How long have we been having this conversation?
Oh, jeez.
About two years?
You just have a one-sided conversation.
Now, the thing that I do recall is she was retained in her position, as I recall.
Thanks, Jason.
I was just about to make note of that. It's impressive, it's impressive. Hope I can hold that standard in two weeks.
Will you set the standard?
Oh, thank you. Did Jason tell you about our radiator spill, or antifreeze spill on Garfield?
No. How about?
That concerned citizen.
No, no.
What?
Even though it was out of our equipment, it was just on the road right where the oil ends and the gravel begins, and he's got to.
Really?
Yeah, they took care of it.
Was it a concerned citizen or a disgruntled citizen, or both? I mean.
We certainly thank them for pointing out the issue, certainly we need to, in a timely fashion, find a way to stay honest.
Exactly.
We got a person that's on the highway security.
He fly, are flying or tender?
Flying the Reagan?
Yeah.
We got to fly west to go east if she. He gotta fly west to go east if she.
What? I wasn't thinking.
Critiquing your travel agent.
Oh. You're a crisis?
No. I'm just asking whose travel agent was.
Oh, yes, I think I did it.
I think you're gonna be seven.
Yes.
Speaking of conferences, are you going, have you been formally chairman, if you invited to?
He's aware, he's going.
Conference, the council to the planning and zoning?
That's what he was saying. Oh, okay.
That's in March, right? Question is, you going? I probably should, you know.
Well, I think part two, you gotta go.
I'm, I think I'm going.
I think three of you are going. Yeah.
Did I say yes or no?
Okay, that's happening.
I probably will.
I volunteered you to take my night shift at the caving slot.
I'm not qualified.
While I'm out of town. My day guy's not happy about it.
I've been here, Kevin, for a minute.
Yeah. We've made some improvements. The older you get, the better catching and release mechanisms you need.
I found this on the web.
That was lovely. My new one, you have to turn like different parts of it down, it doesn't all go down. Yeah, it was not a good change.
Wasn't due to corrosion?
No.
Process, so where's our process with our building?
We have eighteen applications, eighteen. We now went down to six.
Take one and pass it around, like we said.
We're going to, we're going to interview six of those.
Six.
We're gonna be here.
Sarah is working on, we sent a payroll calendar out to everybody, so we know what date payroll's gonna be due, what date we're gonna post, that type of thing, and the day you guys are gonna prove it. So Sarah and I are looking at December. We historically cancel, like maybe due to Christmas and New Year, which is fun, but the way payroll falls this year, it'll end on Friday the fifteenth, so we won't really propose till that Monday the eighteenth. So if we cancel that meeting on the twenty-sixth, we'll have to have a special meeting at least for three of you here to sign payroll, out down to that Friday.
Sorry, the twenty-second?
Yes, so I guess the only question is at this point, do you want to just plan on cancel that meeting, just have you to come in and sign it on the twenty-second, just so we can tell people where you want it or.
Probably would be a good consideration, especially since the twenty-sixth would be the day after Christmas, and folks probably still are traveling.
I won't be traveling, I'll be here, so.
I'll be here.
We're giving them the twenty-fifth, aren't this year off, aren't we?
God bless you, Joey, good suffering.
Very generous.
I also will be, I also will be here broadly, if you want me to. Soon as I say I will. Whatever you wanna do, it doesn't matter. What is, what is the?
These are all subject of change, I know, but we just kinda, everybody's been asking for it.
If you cancel it in the twenty-second.
If you need to schedule a special meeting, I can be available for that.
Me too.
Well, like I said, we could do it on the twenty-sixth, but normally cancel that, so.
We always stay here a lot, probably, so.
Sounds like we can have a quorum for signing.
Okay, okay, I'll just put it on the calendar for the twenty-second.
Okay.
Sometime this spring, I think Sarah and I are gonna go to Madison County, or some other size county, so I have a meeting, there's been, they have a couple people running the payroll for a long time, and they are bi-weekly, or not, yeah, bi-weekly. So we're gonna go get some information, see how the process is going.
Good.
When are you contemplating instituting that here in what county?
Well, it's not really me, it's gonna be kind of what happens at the board.
When could we? If the board can approve it.
I honestly, until we see, can I know what we need to do, I don't know, I need to, I don't know what committee it can be, but I probably need to talk to the person at committee that is gonna change, especially if it's gonna be more people.
So, right, the budget, she's, uh.
What?
Since she doesn't have an election, President budget.
I don't wanna say the reelection, have you seen the legislation? No.
Move slowly so that you don't have a lot of glitches, right?
What do you plan on going to Madison County?
I think, I think definitely, yeah, we just thought we'd see what the weather's like sometimes, it's harsh, you know. I don't know, there's never gonna be a good time to do it, 'cause there's always something there, obviously, we're gonna.
Do you have a reasonable idea of how many counties are going to bi-monthly?
Quite honestly, I think we're, well, some are bi-weekly, there are a couple bi-monthly, but I think there's only three or four of us left that will be monthly.
Well, if, to clarify, having been in an organization that's, is bi-weekly, there's twenty-six pay periods in a year, and you, so you know, you know what, you have a definition of how many times you have to do payroll, you always know. But it doesn't, it isn't first fifteenth, it's whatever, wherever it gets. So it's, so you always know there's twenty-six pay periods. And so you can look at the next year's calendar, and you know exactly when your cutoff dates are, so.
Is bi-weekly advantageous versus bi-monthly?
From what I've talked to other clerks, there's, like I said, there's very few that do bi-monthly.
I believe for these.
I never get to approach the funds, but most of them are like bi-weekly, because that way your benefits are divided in half. You're taking half out of one and half out of the other. Bi-monthly, you gotta back 'em all up, because sometimes you might have three pay periods a month.
You still run into holidays and stuff where you have different.
There's also something to be said as far as the weekly schedule that your department heads have to adhere to when it comes to payroll, they can get into more of a routine vice, if it's, if the fifteenth is mid-week, they can throw things out.
Or on a week.
The biggest thing is will be people keeping up with the time and attendance and not waiting until the very last minute to make sure their time and attendance, because that rolls from one system to another, that's our biggest problem.
We, we had two hundred, two hundred and, given time, two hundred and fifty employees, and the ones I had, first we, for years we did it, signed the time cards, go through the time cards, so you forgot to clock out and all that business. Then we went electronic, and I didn't wanna go electronic, but I found out it was a lot easier for the managers to do the electronic, 'cause it red flagged everything that wasn't right.
I mean, it comes in Monday, or every morning, gets a list of punch airs.
If you get, if you get the right, if you get the right software.
Yeah.
Here comes this email that says, "Bill didn't clock out Friday the twelfth." And I know that before, I gotta do time cards, so I can find out.
The biggest thing is if people are sick, on vacation, that type of thing, then they don't put anything in.
It's up to the department heads or the elected officials to do.
And some of them are really good about it, and some of them aren't. That would be the biggest thing, if you, if you pay bi-weekly, you got, you can't, you gotta keep that up. It's not hard to just do it every day, but just don't, just don't do it every day.
Part of growing things.
Yes.
Change hurts sometimes.
And I mean, I'd be honest, I don't think a lot of departments are really good, but have to be good for two days, they'll just soon stay at one, so.
Get all things.
Uh, I, yeah, go visit the chairman, get a push-in impression and stuff.
And I, I don't feel, I don't feel like there's a lot of evaluation.
Here's what I found.
I'm trying to keep doing that, so, I mean, I don't know how big I would.
Um, I, I went to Madison County late last year on a family matter, nice area, nice, nice little town, Madison itself is a great little town.
Their clerk's just, it's her last term or something, but they gotta get all this care of.
I ended up having to go to the courthouse, and the post office, and the sheriff's department while I was there, and they were all just very helpful and easy to deal with.
Anything else coming before the board?
No, I'll just talk, I'll put on the twenty-second minutes for now.
Just do that. Tammy, you have anything for us?
Hi. No good travel agent.
Who, Tammy?
My wife's nice to travel with.
I used to be, but I gave it up.
It's easy at my house, we just don't go anywhere.
Back to begging on somewhere at least forty-five weeks out of the year.
That's kinda how my last five years of my job was, I was ready to stay home.
And you, college, anything else?
Wouldn't stay at eleven.
I adjourned a little.
You're gonna be able to make it?
Yes.
Tyler, you have anything for us?
No, certainly.
That's good news. Anything else?
No, I just don't, you know, where you want the checks.
I don't suppose you want my personal capital, are you?
She was not that much serious.
Do, do we have a fund that is called?
Repair the HVAC?
No, we're still.
Oh, do we have a, a, yeah, exactly. Do we have that?
I don't know.
What are you going to building fund?
We're all looking at you.
I don't know what it means.
I would think.
That's the most appropriate funding.
I would think.
We're gonna do something to correct it, that that would come out of.
I mean, it's directly related to a project that was related to the grounds, that's what I'm thinking, and that's where we're gonna be, be wise in terms. We have to, like, decide major direct, so it's back into the general, the budget process.
My advice is just don't sit on the dust bowl.
I think put them in cash box at all.
That's where we're at.
The board should take this up as a special item next week, decide, just have some conversation about what thing you wanna do.
I'd like to know how it would affect the budget moving forward, to have that in building and grounds as opposed to the general fund.
Do you think this needs to be on agenda?
Yes. Just put it all over and discuss it, and decide where you wanna draft it, and maybe start brainstorming what you wanna do.
There's too many kids there.
Oh, that was just Sarah's stuff, when the payroll ends, when she's gonna propose, yeah, she was just, it was just a calendar sheet. When they guys approve it, I think that's what the box were.
Okay, anything else come for the board?